I think we're ready, yeah.
Counsel Walsh?
I am present.
Present. Counsel Ozy absent, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Field.
Present.
Present. Okay, the first petition is for our National Grid to install PVC conduit towards House number 15 Eastern Ave. from an existing manhole located on a grass strip on the sidewalk and install customer-owned manhole.
Any wishes, speak in favor?
Yeah, from National Grid.
Anybody want to speak in favor, National Grid? Nobody here?
Motion to table?
That, no, that's John Jakowski already met with...
Oh, he did, okay.
Darren.
And there wasn't any issue with it, so...
Right.
Okay. Is anybody else who wants to speak in favor of it? Speak in favor, anyone want to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition?
I have a question.
Goreena, come on up, tell us your...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, but there's a potential chairman?
Yeah, yeah.
And I just wasn't sure how this would impact me, if at all?
Okay.
Or House, because I know that there was a 15 Eastern. Is that, is that always what it's called outside?
Let me get Counsel President's...
Yeah, so Mr. Sears, the counselor for the area, he had spoken to them on specifics of this, so I'm gonna have him come down here.
Oh, great.
All right, give us one minute, all right? Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't show much, though, not particularly. Do a picture.
Picture, manhole, right? On a grass strip, your sidewalk.
So you didn't get a horse, didn't get a pony?
There's a picture here, I'll leave him to come down here and show it to you. I know, I know it was a picture, you can tell.
Okay, so, yeah, that lives in the east side.
It's on the opposite sidewalk.
It's on the opposite side, but I guess the city might just be...
Yeah.
Okay, so, who is it?
Okay, but he's gonna come down to you, so he's gonna go over there.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. There's another one here, too, if you want to figure it out. So this is Eastern, this is the Southern side, and this is where the area's at.
Hello?
All right. The Counsel President, there's a question just about how this is gonna impact their house.
This is number 15.
Number 14.
Hi, Counsel Sir. I just didn't know if that would have an impact on the side of Eastern Ave.
Just the first one up there.
No, it's, there's a manhole that's already there. They're running it from the manhole. Any concrete work that they do, they're gonna have to replace the concrete. They're increasing the service that's in the house, 'cause I think it's 100 amps, which doesn't make sense, especially for a house that size. They're gonna increase it to 200, so they're not digging up the road, they're not having anything to do with any of the neighbors' houses in the area. So I've already talked to them about it, okay?
Thank you.
All right, okay, great. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor, seeing none, part of the hearings closed, what's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, it was seconded. Second, all in favor? Aye. All right, Carrie's.
And talk about, are we taking this off the table, or do we need a motion?
Yes, we'll take the, uh, we'll make a motion to take the TC Systems ink off the table.
TC Systems to install underground PVC conduit at 1:30 Eastern Ave. between Columbia Ave. and Superior Street. The purpose of this installation is to bring service to customer at 1:30 Eastern Ave. Is anyone here from TC Systems?
Wanna come on up and tell us your name, give us a little bit about it.
How you doing? Good. Chris Murray, TC Systems. And we're looking to get permits to install fiber optics from a utility pole nearby to bring services into 1:30 Eastern Ave.
Any questions?
How much work is this gonna be on the street?
The, I've, I met with Darren a little while ago, and we were discussing, the original plan was to trench down Eastern Ave., but he brought to my attention that it was recently paved.
Right.
So we're gonna look into an option of potentially cutting down sidewalk, and if that doesn't work out, we'll probably do the curb-to-curb as he requires.
Repaving, repaving curb-to-curb.
Right, curb-to-curb.
Because that street wasn't done that long ago.
Yeah, I think he said about a year ago.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor?
I'll speak in favor, with the stipulations that are added to it.
With the stipulations, okay.
That they repave curb-to-curb, infrared both ends, or if they decide that that's costly, in fact, then they'll look at doing sidewalk and replace whatever concrete they cut. But it'll be all the sidewalk, not like a strip, so...
Okay.
Okay? So I'm speaking in favor.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition, seeing none, part of the hearings closed? What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve with the stipulations that the Counsel President set forth.
Okay, so the stipulations were that they would go curb-to-curb 10 feet in both directions, east to west, they would infrared red the street or the seam, or if they decided to get on the sidewalk, it'd have to be replaced with concrete in its entirety. Those are the stipulations, okay? All right, motion made, seconded. Aye. All right, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business? New business, yes, so new business. We want to take the toll agreement off the table, right? New business, new business.
No, yeah.
All right, so Jim, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Correct, so X to N is putting about 20 applications for different small cell antennas on different locations throughout the city. Pursuant to federal law, if the council takes no action within 60 days, they automatically deem granted. I said that's not, that's not fair to the council. So this tolling agreement would stop the block out again now that the elections are over, when you folks can go site to site, looking at these, speaking directly to neighbors, focus on their opinions about the small cell antenna. They are gonna be here at the November 26 meeting, they're gonna be flying in a bunch of people to answer questions about why they're needed, what negative health effects it could be for the public. This tolling agreement would say that the council has to take some action, whether it's yes or no, by, by on the December 10 meeting. And as long as they do that, it's not automatically deemed granted. Taking no action, it would be deemed granted, so I thought this was a fair combination that they had, understanding that it's a busy time in October for the council. The sheer number, eventually there'll be 130 of these locations, that there really needs to be some better education for the council. And as I think the last meeting, she explained that this is not really cellphone signal issues. These are issues where people have apps on their phone, on computers, and they're running smoke, you get that little ping wheel rolling. These 130 are designed to make your phones go faster, your laptops and your computers go faster. So as I said, she's gonna have three or four people from her firm flying in here for the 26. I said that even that probably isn't enough time for the making of a formal decision. You guys wanna have questions and wanna do a double look and speak to neighbors. So the agreement calls for a December 10 decision, yes or no, on the 20 applications that are in it today.
Okay, so what would be appropriate for this? To take it under consideration, accept it?
The proper motion to be authorized, the mayor to execute this agreement.
Okay, all right.
The law department does have authority to bind the city. No single council has the authority to take this, this chief, I mean, the chief executive office that can only bind the city in order like this.
Okay, all right, so make the motion that his honor the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a tolling agreement between the City of Lynn and Xent relative to previously filed applications for grant of locations for the small cell equipment on the City of Lynn-owned poles.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Carrie. All right.
Hey, roll call.
Counsel Ozy?
Present.
Present. Counsel Staben?
Present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Okay, the first is a discussion for proposed ordinance amending the ordinance creating a public arts commission in the City of Lynn.
Anyone want to make a motion? We'll get it on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion, second. Okay, any discussion? If you want, Ms. Cole, if you'd like to...
Thank you for having me. So this is just basically, a year into the launch of our arts commission, we decided to focus our efforts into creating a slightly more functional ordinance, really just tightened up some language and things like this to set forth for future term numbers. Basically, so we're a little more effective. There were things that may not have been addressed, and therefore need to, like I said, just be altered slightly according to our needs at the time. So we focused this sort of amended set of bylaws. There really aren't a ton of changes. I think some of the major ones you'll see from under Section 4, the members, rather than having, members of the Arts Commission or DPW requirement, you would involve community members, and basically all the motions that set forth after that, we neither approve them anyway. They just gave our attention, having our members in the board, that they, we don't want to be part of the board, and that's totally okay. So we found it, it might be slightly more effective to have them involve community members, and again, you have to go through them as a step anyway, just not have to have to be prescriptive among them. Also, proposing two-year termings for everyone, one year may have been a little too short. Three-year, I believe, every six-year, we might use an entire, the entire board would lapse. This would give us maybe a 50% possible turnover each year. And basically funding, there wasn't much mentioned in terms of funding. We've been able to bring in our own sponsorships and money for a lot of our projects we have in the city, and we did create an account here last September, I think, September 11, to set up that account. I know there's some discrepancy where there should be a revolving or not. We work for you all, so whatever you're happy with, Jim, it's all helpful, we provide legal information on this.
There is a revolving account the council accepted last September, so we grant money and sponsorships and gifts, and we want to make sure that the money is going for arts and not paying legal salaries.
And again, it has funded our inaugural project, the Mayoral, and it's gave us a nice little bill for our next project and work, so... These are, again, just proposals, you know, and of course, we, Counsel approval, as we near year, we want five members, a mayor, white card members, and we're gonna be...
Ms. Jim?
Please.
Carrie, so is this going to take the place of the downtown Lynn cultural group? Or is this just something...
No, no, this is still a public arts commission. Per the ordinance, the, whoever is the director of the cultural district has to be a member of the commission, which is why I'm always the speaker. It's completely separate, it's the city, the city commission that's entirely separate from the public commission, you sit on it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Congress? Well, here it is, roll call. No. Oh, oh, we set, oh, okay, I apologize. So that was a motion to set it down for a public hearing.
For a public hearing, yes.
It was seconded. Any other discussion on that? Hearing done, we'll vote on setting it down.
Okay, Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Okay, the second item is a proposed ordinance regulating signs in the City of Lynn except in the central business district, to set down for public hearing.
Motion to set down a public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion on that?
Because I was a little back up, we have a sign ordinance that we created 30 years ago, and at that time, we didn't have a waterfront zone. So I know ISD has been approached by some people that are asked how big a sign can be of the waterfront, and this is a stock gap measure that will have something on the books anyway while we look long-term. I think everyone in the council, mayor's office, ISD recognizes that maybe the sign sizes 30 years ago may not be appropriate, and that may be something appropriate for a committee or subcommittee elected and appointed officials. But in the meantime, until we get to a working document, including forward, there was a concern that someone could come in and put a giant Starbucks sign, we would have no say on it. And as you know, certain size, a number of signs have to come to the council. Four or two signs, I believe, have to come to the council, signs over certain length and width have to come to the council. Right now, that's kind of the Wild West on the, on the Lynn, on the way, and we want to at least stop that while we look into a long-term sign solution.
Didn't we pass an ordinance 10, 12 years ago regarding, like, uniformity on the signs downtown?
That is actually something that we did. The previous administration believed that, that law is still on the books, with a vision that downtown should have uniform signs. The last mayoral administration had a different view, that might, might be the right view, might be the wrong view, with the bureaus, this seems to be what Caroline's been working with for the cultural district and the arts commission. There may be a desire moving forward to change that central business district instead of just black and gold letterings, to have people be creative and alike. But as of right now, everything is, any new sign supposed to be just black and gold, and that's something that needs to be either reaffirmed or changed, depending on what you folks think is the, that vision of downtown.
And the waterfront?
Right now, there's something in place while we, while you guys...
This puts something in place that, whereas now there isn't?
There is nothing in place, the waterfront.
Okay. So it would mirror what we have in place right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Which may or may not be good long-term, but at least it's not...
Right, right, so that way there, we can't, somebody can come along and put this glowing neon sign in there and look awful, and we have no means to... Okay.
This is just a set down.
Okay, setting down, all right. Any questions, discussion? Motion made and seconded, roll call.
Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's it, any other good comments?
Motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, roll call, please. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Staben?
Present.
Present. Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears.
Present.
Present.
Okay, present.
Oh! Present. [laughing] Get these mixed right in.
Okay, we start, ordered that the City Comptroller Bean is hereby authorized to appropriate from the FY 20 property tax, state aid, and other local receipts, a sum of $1,783,713.00 to fund various needs across the city. Want me to keep going?
Yes, yes.
Keep going. Ordered that the City of Lynn accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 3, with respect to keeping the lease payments received from the success bidder of the lease of the city's municipal golf course in its operations. This account shall remain in fund 028, and capital expenses may be spent from this account accordingly pertaining to the contents and upkeep of the city-owned golf course. Current lease agreement effective 1/1/2020 through 12/31/2024, state 65% of the lease receipts are to be retained in this revolving account, 35% would be considered general fund receipts. Ordered that the Department of Public Works be allowed to make expenditures for snow and ice control in the excess of appropriations for these costs pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 31d.
Counsel, I'm gonna make a motion that we table it. They're gonna resubmit it, so that we can do it to what, they're being asked to do it differently, okay?
Okay, yeah, second. Okay, roll call.
Can I just ask?
Okay.
One quick question. Mike, is there anything in this for, 'cause I see, you know, care of dogs expense for a new truck for the dog officer?
Yes.
Okay, that thing's an embarrassment.
Yeah, it's, it's under the...
It's gonna have a condition?
It's gonna go in the top of the...
Just, just where the dogs go.
It's, it's one of the, it could be one of the...
Table, huh?
Similar article coming out.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Roll call on table.
Okay, excuse me, which one have we tabled? Three of them.
The golf course.
Just the golf course?
Yeah, we're gonna table it all. These are gonna be, motion to layover.
Okay.
The golf course is gonna, I'm asking, table the golf course.
Okay, so we're laying over the first and third, but the second, the golf course is gonna be tabled?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yep, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have transfer of the sum of $300,870 from the account of health insurance expense to the account of DPW expense to fund the purchase of energy-efficient fleet vehicles.
What's the wish of the council?
These are gonna layover, too.
A motion to layover.
And one more to layover, transfer the sum of $30 from the account of Lynn Fire Department expense to the account of Lynn Fire expense to fund a bill of prior year. So these will both layover?
Both layover.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have transfer of the sum of $300,870 from the account of health insurance expense to the account of DPW expense to fund the purchase of energy-efficient fleet vehicles.
What's the wish of the council?
These are gonna layover, too.
A motion to layover.
And one more to layover, transfer the sum of $30 from the account of Lynn Fire Department expense to the account of Lynn Fire expense to fund a bill of prior year. So these will both layover?
Both layover.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Okay, do you want me to read these available funds?
So Mike, this is the one?
Certifies available fund, the amount of $150,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety for the FY 20 Behavioral Health Unit funding secured by the Lynn delegation via legislative earmark. Certifies available fund, the amount of $5,733,4794.16 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 20 Title I Grant. Certifies available fund, the amount of $4,212,874.00 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 2024 IDEA Special Education Entitlement Grant. Certifies available fund, the amount of $664,187.20 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 20 Title II Grant. Certifies available fund, the amount of $568,640.40 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Education, Secondary Education for the FY 20 Title III 180 Grand English Language Acquisition Grant. Certifies available fund, the amount of $401,999 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 20 309 Title IV Grant. Certifies available fund, the amount of $257,136 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 20 Perkins Secondary Allocation Grant. And finally, certifies available fund, the amount of $99,068.20 has allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY 20 IDEA Special Education Preschool Grant.
Mr. President, you have...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and also like it to be noted in the minutes that this was over $7 million, over $7 million in grants. That was a big issue during the campaign season, that the city doesn't do enough, and this shows that we are, there's $7 million plus in grants in this one meeting tonight, and this goes on every time we have a finance committee meeting, that there are millions of dollars in grants that are being approved by this committee, by CFO, and by the mayor's office, to go into various departments, whether it's school department, police, fire, DPW, or anything. So that's just to let everybody know what we're doing. Thank you.
Motion for emergency.
And we had one tabled from the last meeting, transfer the sum of $2,200 from the account of state election expense to the account of city clerk expense to fund the replacement of the broken monitor for posting public hearings outside of City Hall as required by Mass General Law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift for the purpose of purchasing a memorial bench at Gallagher Park. Further ordered that the Comptroller's Office is hereby authorized to establish a revolving fund in order to effectuate the purpose of said gift.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis absent, Counsel Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Ordered that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority at one time or from time to time to refund all or any portion of the city's general obligation bonds outstanding as of the date of adoption of this order, and that the proceeds of the refunding bonds issued pursuant to this order shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the bonds of the city to be refunded and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that the treasurer is authorized to execute such documents as may be necessary or desirable to carry out this transaction, including one or more refunding trust agreements with a bank or trust company. Further ordered, any premium received by the city upon the sale of refunding bonds approved by this order unless any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith.
Wow.
Wow.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staben?
Yes.
No.
No emergency. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Call me, no others. Roll call.
Council Barton?
Present.
Present, Council Field?
Present.
Present, Council LaPierre?
Present.
Present. Council Chakuta Sapsen, Council Walsh?
Present.
Present, Council Stavitt?
Present.
Okay, first item is discussion for sixteen eighteen Saint Clair Street.
Give the council president the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So there are neighbors here tonight from Saint Clair Street, and this has been going on for almost two years. This is records of constant issue of school buses that are being picked, uh, kids being picked up in that neighborhood in the morning. It's, it's one thing to have a school bus come and toot its horn to get, uh, pick up their passengers, whether it be children or adults. These buses sit there for fifteen, twenty minutes at six o'clock in the morning, pounding on the horn constantly. It's disrupting the neighborhood, it's affecting the harmony there, it's waking people up. And on top of that, the bus is sitting in the middle of the street, holding up traffic. The bus drivers have been asked to stop doing it. Spin, which, uh, rents the entire house.
Center board.
Has their tenants?
Center board.
Yep. I'm sorry, center board. Center board does, which rents the entire house, puts their clients there, and we have asked, uh, center board, we've asked the owner of the property to stop doing it. It's gotten to the point where the neighbors go out in the morning, and there could possibly wind up being a confrontation. The bus drivers are disrespectful to the neighbors when they're asking them, basically telling them, not in nice words, to beep it. That they have a right to be out there beeping the horn, which they don't. The only time a horn can be beeped is in an emergency situation. Unfortunately, the people who are living in that house are using the buses as an alarm to get themselves and their kids up. There's no, there's no reason why anybody should take fifteen minutes to come out of their house or to have their kids. And if an organization is renting the house, they should be respectful to that neighborhood, and they're not. It's obvious by this folder here. I don't know if there's anybody here from the, from the bus company or from, okay, um, and let them speak when I'm done. But it's gotten to the point where as a wide counselor, I am receiving numerous weekly calls from the neighbors over there. As I said, I mean, you have retired people who live there, and, and this house isn't just causing the problems with the buses. It's going on at midnight, they're disrupting the neighborhood. The people that are living there know that they're causing problems, and they go out there and they, they beep their horns in the middle of the night. People aren't getting a full night's sleep. It's just completely unfair. I want to deem the property, to be perfectly honest with you, as a nuisance property. Uh, and we can fine the bus drivers, I believe it's up to three hundred dollars.
Per violation, correct?
Per violation. So if the police are there, they can go and they can actually fine the bus driver. And to be honest with you, I think we have better things that our police department could be doing, rather than having to sit there when a bus comes to pick up kids, and they're, and they're constantly blasting the horn. So I'd like our committee to do whatever it is that we have to do to get this to stop. Thank you. And there are members of that neighborhood that are here tonight.
Right, right.
So I'm gonna give them an opportunity to speak in front of the council.
Right, so, um, first we'll have the bus company come up and speak, and then we'll have the neighbors come up. Anybody from the bus company wanna come up and speak?
Um, I have a couple of weeks.
Would you give us your name, please?
My address. And I live on fifteen Frances Street. Well, the way we work, they've been, they sent me a letter saying that we beep the horn at six o'clock, and the guy is from eighteen sixteen Saint Clair Street, we never go in there at six o'clock in the morning. The pickup time that we have there is at eight forty-five, and the last time that we drop off in there is at five something, oh, forty-five around. Um, this person came to us one day. I assumed the responsibility in the morning, I spoke to the driver, asked me, what was the situation? I tell him to beep the horn, but I contacted parents. Not everyone has a cellphone next to them, so we beep one. So I tried to reduce the noise. But this person came to me, uh, came to my driver, one of my driver last week or a couple of weeks ago, which I have a video.
But you're speaking about one incident, but it seems like there's several incidents.
No, I'm saying, that's why I'm talking about one incident, because if I speak about others, I'm not gonna leave out here. It's a lot of complaint, basically, that they've been calling me, and I've been like, are you sure, like, Beatrice from the second floor, she says, oh, one time you went next to my house, and your driver was beeping the horn, it's crazy, and then we don't have that address. I think you are confused. You blame on me or something that we haven't do. I don't have any kid on that house. I've been, I asked her, I've been like, can you check tomorrow which one is the company that is doing it? Because I'm perfectly sure that we had on that address. And also, we don't beep the horn, it's crazy, because we already did a meeting about it, and we are concerning about the opinions outside. So last time we went to a neighbor, we never been angry with him, he come out. He says, oh, I'm gonna call the city hall, and I'm gonna put you down because my wife work there. So I've been like, sir, you can do exactly what you want, and we might have to follow the requirements, as you say. Your wife work at the city hall, I don't think she's something else different to anybody else. So if you wanna call the city hall, that would be great, that way they can assign what's the rule that we need to follow, because how am I gonna contact parents? If they don't come out, how am I gonna send a text? Sometime parents doesn't have any phone with them. So we try just to beep one, and try to be calm, and not bother anyone. In the morning, if the parents, I already spoke to them, after I received the letter, then I listened, and I showed the letter to all the clients that we have, and I told them, this is the requirement the city hall is trying to follow. If you're not ready by this time, I'm gonna send you a text, and if you didn't come out, I cannot beep the horn. So we've been trying just to make accommodation, how we're gonna work and fix this problem in reality.
Mr. Chairman, so you pick these same kids up at the exact same time every day?
Every day, every day.
So how is it that the parents don't have their kids down at the door?
They don't have them. That's a worry that we have, basically, with parents. Some of them are very responsible, some of them are not.
And how many kids do you pick up at this one address?
What, what address?
This sixteen eighteen Saint Clair Street.
And the pickup time is at eight forty-five, all the time. The, the drop-off time is at four forty-five, and I can show you the video that I have.
Okay, but six forty-five, eight forty-five, every day you pick up this one kid, you have to beep the horn to remind the parent to bring their kid down, even though they're supposed to be down at that time every day?
Not every day, we didn't, we didn't, most of the time, that's why I get surprised on that specific address, because she's very responsible, and sometime hardly we beep the horn. And that neighbor come out yelling in front of the kids, being like, situation, you know, that he was not supposed to, he just need to come and say, don't beep the horn. And we might follow the rule or explain it to him, not yelling to the drivers like they are nothing without no respect at all. So in this case, to be honest, I don't know what else I can do. I've been trying to speak to the, to the clients, parents, company, for them to tell them what we need to do.
I think the parents need to know what their responsibility is, and it's to have their kid out there when the bus pulls up, to come down the stairs, get in the bus. Without any beeping, without any text messages or anything like that.
And on that specific street on Saint Clair, I see many buses different than they going in there, slightly, um, on the same street. And I don't know if he might, you know, all of them.
Don't you think if, if, um, you told them you'd be there at seven forty-five to pick them up, and if they went out there and you left, you think they'd be out there the next day on time?
Yeah, I, I'll show you.
So how come that doesn't happen?
Also, a point of real quick information, there are two different bus companies.
Three.
Great, great.
Three. It's three, so there are three different times. I don't know if there's anybody from the other bus companies that are here? Okay, there is someone.
Um, you see, that's the time that we always get there.
Right, 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 but what I'm saying is, if, why are you waiting to wait for them if they're not outside like this?
That's something that, to be honest, I cannot ask them. I always tell them, and I told you, since I received this message, I spoke to them, I called the companies, that way they can send the information to all the people that we have. That way they can see that it's not me who's been putting pressure, I'm putting pressure on them, and that's something that I have to do. So since that day, I've been trying to work with them, and I think everything is much better than before, but it's, some of them is still getting annoying.
Do we know how many students are being, or children are being picked up from this location total?
Uh, it's three different bus companies.
Right, but we do, do we know a total of how many are being picked up?
Four, four kids.
Four kids?
No, four bus companies now. Now the public school bus is doing the same thing.
But do we know how many, we know how many kids are being picked up from the location? So she's saying, if, if Ms. Ray is saying her company picks up one?
One.
Do we know how many total are being picked up?
The neighbors may have a better idea.
It's at least four, and this starts at, uh, six o'clock in the morning.
Are we taking these individually?
For over two hours, they're picking them up at eight fifteen, which it doesn't matter what time of the day it's at. The problem is that the agency that is housing the, uh, parents in the house is not informing the, the kids, uh, the parents, they have their children out there. But I think as the chairman said, that if they're supposed to be out there at seven forty-five, and the bus pulls up, and those children aren't out there, the bus should move on. It shouldn't be sitting there for fifteen minutes blasting its horn.
Are we taking these individually? Is there anybody else, bus companies, wanna come up?
Well.
Why don't you come up here and talk? So everybody?
My name's Keetla Rochnuck, I'm the owner of Supreme, Supreme Charter.
And where are they at?
We are out of Danvers.
Yep, that driver just beeped at five o'clock. We got it on, I'll make a video.
Hey, wait a minute, well, you'll have the time, everybody will have their time to speak.
Yeah, absolutely. So I find it extremely interesting that I, in the letter, it says it was before six AM, and I brought my route sheet for that particular route. The pickup time is six fifty. So why any one of my vehicles would be on that particular street prior to six fifty is beyond me. We don't pick up anybody else on that street, so our pickup time is six fifty, we beep. It's always been a protocol. It's protocol no matter what town we drive in.
I have no issue with someone beeping to get someone to come out, but when a bus sits there for ten or fifteen minutes, continuously beeping the horn, and then when they're asked not to do it, and the bus drivers are disrespectful to the people who live in that neighborhood, that's where I have an issue.
No, and I totally understand. As far as my company's concerned, I can't speak on behalf of anybody else who's here, we have a three-minute wait rule. So if the students aren't outside, if the pickup time is six fifty, and the students aren't outside by six fifty-three, we do move on. We do a two beep, courtesy beep, to allow them to know that we're out, because we are a specialized transportation company, we are dealing with special circumstances. If we were a yellow bus company, right, and we were doing the large yellow buses, everybody would be walking to a particular bus stop, right? There's no wait needed because everybody's ready to go. In these particular situations where we are dealing with specialized transportation, it is our way of alerting the students and the parents to know that we are outside. We do a door-to-door service as opposed to the students coming to us, right? So we try to make it a little bit easier on them. A lot of these students are dealing with, you know, beyond just bus company stuff. Um, so for us, we're trying to just make the affirmation to what's going on with them a little bit easier and a smoother transition for them in these circumstances. So with that being said, the reason why we do the beep is to alert the parents. Now again, I can't speak on behalf of anybody else, we're not out there for fifteen minutes, we're out there for three, and then we move on if the students don't come out. Every parent has been understanding that we have that three-minute wait rule, and that students aren't welcome to come out after that because we'll be gone. All of my drivers know that they're allowed to beep twice. They beep once when they first show up, a minute and a half after we've been there, we do a secondary beep saying, hey, you've got a minute and a half, and we're leaving, and that's it. We don't blare on the horns. If any of my drivers were ever to be found blaring on the horn, I would have a problem with that as well, and I totally understand that concern.
Council Fields? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many students do you have at that particular location, Saint Clair? Two?
We've been transporting that particular location for the last three and a half years.
Same location?
Yes, different students, same location.
Different floor, maybe?
Yeah. I will add two, just so that everybody's aware. Um, as of October this year, the registry has made it a law that we have to have an audible backup alarm on all seven D vehicles. I don't know if that's adding to the noise, but that's beyond all of our control. As a bus company, we have no choice but to put those in, otherwise we are not compliant.
That I'm getting complaints about.
They're really loud.
There'd be no reason for them to be backing up unless there was, you know, once in a while.
If we pull into, if we pull into a driveway, because a student, let's say.
But the issue isn't that they're not pulling into the driveway, they're sitting in the street.
I'll just say that.
And it's, it's four different buses that are going to that location now.
That's great.
And whether they're there for three minutes, or they're there for fifteen, it's a, it's a problem. And I, I commend you, if your bus driver's out beeping the horn two times and moving on after three minutes. But that's not the case. I don't know which bus company it is, who's on it, but for the last two years, I've been getting complaints on a weekly basis from, from not one neighbor, but just about everybody that lives on the street, to be honest with you. So there's all, obviously, an issue down there.
Right, and I totally understand, and I just know that, and I've grown up in the transportation industry, literally, since I was from a very young age, um, and as far back as I can remember, it has always been protocol to beep as soon as you're outside of seven D transportation students.
Protocol is one thing, but when it's, it's disrupting the harmony of the neighborhood and the people who live there, that's a problem, that's an issue. So as I said, we do have ordinances that the bus drivers can be fined up to three hundred dollars. So I don't know any bus driver that can afford a ticket of up to three hundred dollars.
And I totally.
And I'm trying to avoid that.
Yeah.
So if I have to have a police cruiser sitting down there in the morning, and they witness a driver beeping their horn, whether it's one time or fifteen times, that officer has the right to issue a ticket of three hundred dollars. So something's gotta, we have to do something. We have to convince the people that are living in their house that you guys are gonna be there a certain time to have their kids waiting for them on the porch. It's unfair that, that the bus, it's unfair to you, it's unfair to the bus driver, but it's more unfair to the people who live there. It's having an impact on the neighborhood, and it's a negative one. And that's unfair, these people pay their taxes.
No, and I totally understand, I think that it's also something that may should may possibly do well if it goes in front of the school board and see how they would like to handle it, or with Dave Hegan, you know what I mean?
Well, the way that we can go in front of the school board is that we can ask them not to pick the students up anymore. So it won't have an impact on you, but it will have an impact on people that live.
A lot of these students are out of district, so they may be residing in Lynn, but they don't, they're getting transportation.
Out of the district, I get that.
So some of the students that are living in there, I mean, we're, we're picking them up, but we're not, we're not transporting in Lynn.
Right.
You know, um, and, and that's the whole part that we can even do, ask, to be able to give them that transportation.
And that's part of the point, what I'm trying to make, is that that building is being leased by a group, an organization, that's making money off of the people that are living there. Even though they're nonprofit, they are still making money.
Right.
And, and at the cost of the neighborhood.
Yep.
And I'm receiving weekly complaints about this property. It isn't just the buses, there are other issues there, but the buses are part of the problem, and it's the beep. So right now, the only people I have standing in front of me are the two bus companies. I don't know if the third or the fourth bus company is.
Right, you have the bus companies, yeah. Oh, that's only two. Mr. Chairman?
So you're from the same company?
Yes.
Okay. And I appreciate both of yous coming here tonight, both companies, I, I really do. Uh, is there a third company here or the fourth? So obviously, you're trying to be responsible, I, I get that, and, and I think the neighbors get that too. But there's still a major problem.
Council Stavitt? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the message just needs to be sent to the parents that have your kids ready five minutes before the bus is scheduled to be there. I mean, the bus sits out there, it idles, you know, we had a school right down the street a few years ago, when I was on the school committee, did a big presentation of how they had a no idling program, um, to, to, for buses, so that they didn't idle in front of the schools.
Right.
And then here we are, sending school buses all over the city that are sitting there idling in front of people's homes, beeping horns, affecting the quality of life in the neighborhoods, because the parents aren't responsible enough to have their kids ready on time for the bus. And I think that that message needs to be sent home to the parents. Have your kids ready five minutes before the, before the bus comes. You know, if you're gonna be late for the bus, you're gonna be late for just about everything else that comes along in life, and, uh...
We do ask them when we initially introduce ourselves that to have them ready five minutes prior, um, but now also, my law has been passed, that we've had to install the backups.
Well, it doesn't mean you have to, if, if there's no need to put it in reverse, I wouldn't put it in reverse, but I would say if they're not, if they're not ready when the bus pulls up, and, and, and they don't come out without being prompted with the horn, I'd move on, and I think eventually they'd get the message.
I definitely, I mean, I understand that.
I certainly wouldn't want it happening in my neighborhood.
I definitely understand that piece of, but I know that, I mean, every bus company I've, I've ever been a part of, beeps everywhere, and I get that, I get that it's a, it's, um, an issue, um, but that's reconditioning parents, and that's gonna take some time in reality. I mean, as it is right now, even, we're doing two, honestly, and I know that if, maybe somebody else is sitting out there for a long.
I guarantee if that bus leaves, the next day the parents will have their kids ready.
But that's, that's not what happens. But that's, that's not what happens. We end up becoming the bad guy. Uh, honestly, we do, we become the bad guy, and you put us in front of the school systems, and the school systems tell us that we have to do specific things in order to make it work. So it's not necessarily going to be that we just take off, and then everybody's just going to show up the next morning. We're going to end up in front of a school board asking us why we just keep taking off on these kids.
So, and that's fine. That's a school board that has nothing to do with the city of Lynn, other than that those kids are being placed into Lynn, and it's causing a problem. So we're, we're asking that school board, wherever it may be, and we're asking the bus company to respect our neighborhood. That's all we're asking them to do. It's that simple. Now, wherever, I, I have no idea where you live, but if, if you had the bus sitting out in front of your house every day, beeping its horn at six o'clock in the morning, six thirty, six fifty, eight forty-five, whatever time it may be, that you would be aggravated. So I'm asking you to please respect and understand what these people are doing. That's all I'm asking. And I'd hate to give a bus driver a three hundred dollar ticket.
Yeah.
That would stink.
Yeah.
But I'm being left with no choice other than to ask the police to sit down there at one time. That's all they have to be there for is witness. One time that they beep, and I guarantee the bus drivers.
I know, one of our drivers was extremely nervous to ever beep again because one of the neighbors digs him out and verbally accosted our drivers, to the point that he threw trash at our vehicle. I mean, you know, I don't think that a, a simple beep should be deserving to something like that.
I don't think that any neighbor should do that.
No.
I did call here, though, City Hall, like, six months ago, because I had an issue with another street, um, Oxmo Terrace, where the gentleman was blocking it and telling us it was his. And we couldn't. We run into situations often.
Right.
And it was coincidentally at the same time that I had gotten a call from someone in that neighborhood of St. Clair. So I called, and I started with the park, because I didn't even know who to talk to. I got passed to two or three different people, and I, it started out with the issue I was having on Oxmo Terrace. And they said, you know, I said, can you, can you look that up and find out if it's a street? I mean, maybe we're not supposed to. So I did look into whatever issues that come up. And then, at the same time, I said I'm having another one about, in another neighborhood, which was the one we're talking about now, um, as far as beeping. I said, is there an issue? This is how we let the kids know that we're there, let the parents know we're there. And I wasn't at that time, until we got this letter, I wasn't told that there was any law about.
We were told that there was nothing around.
There was nothing wrong with that.
And that it was okay.
As long as you're not, you know, laying on the horn. I'm sorry.
There's an ordinance in the city that the only time you can beep a horn is in an emergency situation.
Just a full warning in an emergency situation.
I just found that out by this caller that he sent off.
When we called, was that very?
He said anything about that.
So if you have a problem and you need help, you can call either the council office, or the, or the solicitor's office.
Yeah, this was, I think they sent me, originally because my question was whether or not Oxmo Terrace was a, a legal street.
Yep.
Um.
But again, you can, anytime, our office, we have someone there every day.
Yeah.
And if we can't help you, or refer you down to a solicitor, who will help you. But I want to rectify the problem on St. Clair.
So as far as tomorrow goes, if we can recondition these parents on St. Clair to understand that we are no longer allowed to beep on this particular street, or I guess anywhere at this point in line, um, if we could have some time to recondition the parents, as of tomorrow, most of our drivers are going to beep no matter what.
No, I, I get you're going to need a little bit of time.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, parents have to be responsible for their kids.
That's true.
And they have to make sure that their kids are up and ready to go when that bus pulls up. Because it's inconvenience, they have to be respectful to their neighbors. Just like they want their neighbors to be respectful to them. That's all we're asking for.
Counsel Seer, we have a cou- couple of counselors with questions. Counsel, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do appreciate the fruitful discussion. However, I just want to be, we only have two bus companies here. We are missing probably one, if not two, more bus companies. I think the complaint was about the six AM. Both companies that came before us have stated six fifty was the earliest drop, and eight forty-five. So we need to identify the two bus companies that aren't here, send them through Mr. Heegan at the school department, a letter or notification will appear before us, so we can get to the bottom of the problem, which is that early, early hour of six AM. I see that as the real problem.
That's what I.
Counsel, we haven't heard from the, the, um, people here, the residents.
But we have heard of a six AM, and that's what I'm trying to get to, you know, six fifty and eight forty-five.
Well, let's get the whole story.
One of the residents.
Get the whole story.
I think he.
Right, right, right.
His, his resident.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the issue is, okay, the Senate Board is housing these people in this house. And they're, they're transient in nature, okay? So the bus company shouldn't be responsible to get these kids on the bus. Their, their responsibility is to transport these kids, not wake them up and, and make sure they get to school on time. Their, their responsibility is to transport them. What happens is, when we start complaining to Senate Board or Counsel Seer, what happens is Senate Board goes in, and they move these people out, and they're moving new people in. And so the bus times for pickup have changed. Okay? So over the weekend, they move somebody in, okay? So now we have a whole new family up on the third floor, okay? And so now, it's probably going to be a new bus this week, at a different time. So, yes, at one time, the bus was at six AM, but they change all the time because they're moving people in and out of this place. And so there are bus changes. There's been Jackies, there's been Supreme, there's been Lynn Public School Bus. There's North Reading Transportation. There's been so many different bus companies. And it's because of the transient nature of the people that they're putting in this house. And none of them are respectful in, of the neighborhood. And when you start getting woken up at midnight from taxi cabs beeping because these people call a cab and they're not waiting for it, and then at six o'clock, six fifteen, six thirty, six forty-five, eight forty-five, we're getting it on both ends. We're not getting any sleep, and we're all working, working class people. We just want to be able to go to bed at ten o'clock at night, and get up at a decent hour in the morning, and do our jobs. And these buses are not helping. They, they, they're not there to wake up the, the tenant, or, or the, the child. That's the parent's responsibility. And if Senate Board can't get that message across to them, then these people need to be going down to Senate Board and going to classes on how to be a good neighbor. And it shouldn't be the bus company's responsibility to wake up these kids. Pull up. If the kid's not there, that's not your problem to get them to school. It's the parent's problem to get them to school. I raised three kids. I didn't bother my neighbors like that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the neighborhood that would like to speak?
I would like to speak. Um, I'm also on fifteen St. Clair Street. My name is Sarah Gillis. Um, and I would also like to make a comparison. It is not just Senate Board House, but behind, my, like, Senate Fo- Board is in front of my house, but we also have a Bridgewell facility behind. And the differences between, and both use transportation companies, and the difference between the two are vastly different. In Senate Board, with the Supreme Charter, Jackies and stuff, we hear, um, beeping constantly. At the Bridgewell facility, right around the corner, on Erie Street, right behind my house, you do not hear anything. They employ boatport, glist, and they actually have a sign that says, "Please do not beep." And I wanted to make that comparison because we've never had an issue with the Bridgeport, Bridge, Bridgewell facility. They are one of the most respectful, one of the most considerate neighbors we have ever had. We are proud to have them as part of our community. And the difference between the respect between the boatport and list drivers and Jackies and Supremes are like vastly different. I've actually had an issue where I was woken up, I was trying to get to, ready for work because I have a eight-thirty time, I have to be at my job. And I was getting ready. I heard, um, this one school bus, I don't know the company of, but they were beeping five times. I came out of the fifth time and asked them politely to please, I have, um, I have family who are sleeping, please be more respectful. It is a three hundred dollar fine. And they said, well, I'm allowed to beep two times, despite having pounded that horn right in front of me. So I feel like the differences must be, um, very focused on. Whatever Bridgewell is doing, Senate Board should be following in their example.
Thank you.
I'd like to just mention that those are two completely different types of transportation companies.
No, we're just saying that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Very different.
I want to say two words too. I am resident of forty St. Clair Street.
Yes.
I live on this street for twenty years.
What's your name?
My name's Sophia, Sophia Fendiva. So, um, very quiet street, seven houses. Because for the last couple of years, the reason why I'm thinking children not ready.
Yeah, toss them in.
Yeah, children not ready, children not ready for transportation because this loud music which coming at midnight from their parents, which they're sitting on their cars, or coming on taxis or something. My house is shaking because this is two houses together. If twelve o'clock, house shaking because parents having fun or doing something, child never will be ready at six fifty AM, never will be ready. Because parents are, I'm pretty sure sleeping after night, partying on doing something. That's why their children never ready. We're getting up early at five o'clock, we're leaving early, but when I have days off, I, I wanna, because we start to work very early, five thirty. But if I have day off during the week, I constantly waking up, I couldn't have my normal sleep because here you go, honking and honking and honking, I couldn't sleep even one day. It's constant loud music, and they, I guess, parents never sleeping. That's why children never ready. So this is interrupting. We, we are kind of not young people too. And as my neighbor told, we working, we want to sometimes relax. But we need to relax just to be productive at work. So this is why it, it's crazy, it's loud, and I don't know, something has to be done, because, I don't know. I don't know what to say.
Thank you. This is why I, it's not just the bus company. It's why I'm asking that we deem this house a nuisance property because the buses are, are part of the problem. The noise coming out of the house is part of the problem. Senate Board is obviously part of the problem. But the owner of the property, after we've issued three tickets to whoever it is that's making the noise in the house, now we can go after the landlord as well.
Mr. President, what's your recommendation?
To, to deem the property a nuisance property.
So moved.
Motion made.
We have a stipulation.
I'd like to set it down as a public area.
Set it down for a public area?
Send a letter to the chief of police, and roll call with the times of complaints, and, and understanding that the office doesn't know they can write a ticket for three hundred dollars, and make that highlight from this committee to the chief.
And I, and I want to also ask that we give the bus company a little bit of time, follow them, to be able to work with their clients that are in the house, because I'm trying to be respectful to you and your drivers. But my responsibility is to every single person that lives on that street, so.
I totally understand that. My, my standpoint is from listening to everything, and I totally understand where you guys are coming from, and where the neighbors are coming from as well. Please understand, I do understand where you guys are coming from. If it was me, I'd be a little aggravated too, but it sounds like the beeping of the horns of the school buses are the tip of the iceberg, and we're the only ones who can really stand forward today.
Right.
Because we're the only ones who can be held accountable today, which I feel like is a little bit, in a sense unfair. Um, again, so my drivers now have to be reconditioned to not beep in the city of Lynn when they've been beeping for years at every other place. And like I said, at the end of the day, it sounds like this is the tip of the iceberg. The problem itself is the property.
Right.
And I'm personally, we're to be held accountable for that.
We have two motions here. One to table, and we'll do yours after, all right?
I've got his time together, so when you're ready, you should put it together.
Put them together? Okay.
So we can do a friendly amendment, amendment to send it down to public area and deem it as a nuisance property.
Right.
And with the stipulation that Counsel Walsh added to the chief.
And that as a motion.
Is it, and that's a motion.
A motion. Do I have a second? Second, stop it? Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapias?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakuta-Sapson, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Stauben?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else on your agenda?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
President Counsel Field?
Present.
President Counsel Lozey, absent Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Okay, the first is Taxi Operator Janaria Cosino.
Hey, come on up. Come on up. How you doing? Good?
Motion approved.
Good motion?
Second.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Thursday morning, go to the clerk's office. Give you places, okay? All right, thank you.
You're all set. Uh, Mario Gonzalez, come on up, Mario.
Mario, how you doing?
Motion approved.
Your motion approved. Second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Thursday morning, go to clerk's office, okay? Thursday morning, yep, you can pick it up.
Can I pick it up any day after then?
Yeah, any day after, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be able to, we'll be able to be here.
Okay. Just down in the. Okay?
Yep, it'll be ready. Uh, Joel Sanchez. Joel Sanchez.
Motion to table.
To table, it's second, all favor.
Second.
Okay, we have a livery operator Felix, Filovos, Felix.
How you doing? Good, man.
Motion approved.
Your motion approved. Second, all favor. Opposed, Thursday morning, go to clerk's office. Yep, thanks.
All set?
Yep.
We have amendment to an auto repair business, four oh seven Essex Street, Mello's Tire and Auto Service, wants to add car rental.
How are you doing? Just tell us a little bit about, what are you doing?
Yeah, I want to try, I open franchise for babies.
Okay.
So I want to try to close a little bit the title, and move it to another location and pivot it.
Okay.
So I want to try to do the rental car.
Out of that location then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, anybody have any discussion on that? Any comments, questions?
Anything.
Huh? Yeah, I don't.
How many, uh, I'm sorry, how many cars are you looking to rent?
We're going to tell you five.
Okay, and it's all off-street parking near, you have parking for those five cars?
Yeah, this place has parking, so. All right, um, who's the counselor?
Boochi.
Have you spoken with him?
I don't know.